Okay, the meeting is now on session. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Glad to have visitors this evening. So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So, we do have some changes. We have some personnel item changes, which I can read into the motion. So, we're going to amend that to add items 144 through 147.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Your call.
Motion by Vianney, second by Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Vianney?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yeses, motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the recognition.
Hi, Mr. Anderson. Each year, some years, because it's not every year that we have a person who's recognized by the Daily Hero Leadership Award, but because it's an extremely, extremely great honor for our students, I think, when they're selected by the Daily Hero. You know what? We took your parents' time hard to find out. There's lots behind that one.
Been trying to earn it for years, aren't we, guys?
Because these awards are uniquely selected and they're nominated by our staff, it even makes it more special when these recognitions come out and we see there's a Warren student that's been selected. And so, to introduce Nathan, I'm going to bring up Ms. Betsy Segala, his guidance counselor, who actually was kind and insightful and wise enough to recognize how powerful Nathan is and make the recommendation as supportive as we have. So, please welcome Betsy Segala.
Nathan, you think you should come up there, too? I just want you to know for the record, I didn't ask you for the picture, because I know when we were submitting to the newspaper, he said, "Not that one." So, I did. I nominated Nathan to be selected for the Daily Hero Leadership Team. I was not surprised when he was selected. It's recognition of students who demonstrate leadership through volunteerism and community service, and I can't thank a more deserving young man. He's an excellent student. You may have seen him before. I think they recognize you at Warren, and he got a 36 on his ACT, and he's a junior. So, that's very impressive, obviously, earning top grades in our most challenging classes, great swimmer, musician. But he's also, in spite of his very, very busy schedule, one of the busiest schedules I know of any all high schoolers, he still finds time to give back meaningfully and generously to those in need. He spent countless hours volunteering with his church, even spending a week in Mexico helping impoverished communities, who helped fix up a bus and build like a sports kind of pavilion for the kids, right? Long story short. And also, he helped a friend of his who's working on an Eagle Scout project. They built a secure shelter for food pantry donations. And he is very humble about all of this, you know, saying, "This is just what needs to be done," which I think makes it just that much more impressive. He's mature, bright, generous, very proud of Nathan and all he's done to represent Warren in a positive light. He's the kind of kid that makes our jobs worth doing, very easy, too. But I know that his biggest and best contributions are still ahead of him, so I'm going to be hearing from him again. So, congratulations.
Do you know where you're going to go to school?
Right now, I'm deciding between U-I and [inaudible].
What was the second school?
[inaudible].
Yeah? Okay. Well, thank you, Nathan. Wish you could stay around a few more years. Would you do so? So, come on back. Engineer something for us. We appreciate that. Don't forget where you started. That's all we can say. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. So, if this is the part of the meeting where if anybody wishes to address the board, it's their opportunity to address the board. Nobody has signed in, so... But if anybody would like to have their three minutes of fame, now would be your chance. Okay? Super. We'll move right along. Nathan, if you have something else you need to do, man, go right ahead. I know we're fun to meet with and all. So, we have, on the president's report, we have one handout that was from the joint conference, which is managing student data privacy, which I think is a good process we all have to be aware of at all times, because we do hold a lot of sensitive data in our information, in our servers, in the cloud, wherever that is. I don't know. But anyway, I think that everybody should review that and make sure that we are doing everything possible to manage that data and keep it safe and secure.
John, has this information we get been given to Mr. McQueen, who's revising our computer safety?
I don't know that. We can certainly do that, though.
I'm sure he's up on things.
You would think so, but we'll double check.
But it wouldn't hurt to guess it on to him.
Absolutely. Got that. We also have the announcement of our board meeting dates. Says for '16, '17, but we already have it. Who's that for '16? Who's '17, '18?
These are the ones for '16, '17, just to begin the calendar year.
Okay, okay. Got it. Good, good? Good? All righty. I don't have anything else than that, so we'll move on to committee reports. We have three of those. We have a policy committee from December's our team.
At the policy committee, there's a first reading for the board later in business. Just on the policy meeting we met, we reviewed a number of policies, and I'll read through them now, so the board might not have to later. There's one or two edits on this or these comments. So, the policies that we reviewed are 2:30, School District elections; 2:120, Board Member development; 2:125, under Board Member compensation expenses. Also, remember, under 2:125, there's three exhibits that associate that policy. And so, one thing we'll be asking for at the next meeting will be, when we read these for a second reading and approval, will also be a resolution from the board in support of this policy. So, there's two expense sheets, and the resolution are also included with this information. The next item in the notes should actually be 2:200. So, that's also would be true in the actual cover sheet for the first reading as well. So, the types of school board meetings is actually 2:200. 2:20 is school board meeting procedure. 2:250, access to district public records. 3:10, superintendent. 3:50, administrative personnel other than the superintendent. 4:10, fiscal and business management. 4:55, use of credit procurement permits. 4:60, purchases and contracts. 4:80, accounting and audits. 4:110, transportation. 4:130, free reduced-price food services. 4:150 is facility management and building programs. 4:170, safety. 4:175 is convicted child sex offender screening notifications. 5:10 is equal employment opportunities and minority recruitment at District 121. 5:30 is hiring process and criteria. 5:60 are expenses. 5:100, staff development program. 5:125 is personal technology and social media usage and conduct. 5:185, FMLA at District 121. 5:190 is teacher qualifications. 5:250 are leaves of absence at District 121. 5:260 is student teachers. 5:280 is duties and qualifications. 5:330 are sick days, vacation, holidays, and leave at District 121. 6:15 is school accountability. 6:50 are school laws. 6:60 are curriculum content. 6:140, education of homeless children. 6:145, migrant students. 6:160, English learners. 6:170, Title I programs. 6:340, student testing and assessment program. 7:15, student and family privacy rights at District 121. 7:30 are student assignments and intra-district transfer at District 121. 7:70, attendance and security. 7:190, student behavior. 7:250, student support services. 7:350, student athlete concussions and head injuries. 7:315, restrictions on qualifications, high schools. 7:340, student records. 8:30, visitors to and conduct down-school property. 8:70, accommodating individuals with disabilities. 8:100, relations with other organizations. Those were the policies that we reviewed at the December 13 meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, next committee report, excuse me, actually, there's two of them. There's two insurance committee reports. I think we already got the one from November. I mean, at least we talked about it, right?
Mr. Anderson, we'd like to hold off on the minutes. The insurance committee members would like to review the wording on those, so we would like to bring those back at a future board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the meeting at all? No? Is there anything to report? Or no? I don't know. I'm just asking. I'm not saying you have to. I just didn't know if you wanted to.
No, I'd rather the insurance committee were all the same.
Okay, got it.
Same page.
Could I just ask a question based on those minutes? I think it was the November minutes. Let me check to be sure. Maybe I'm wrong, but... Oh, no, it is. Four percent of the insured population accounts for 50% of the claims. Are these people... Are people really, really sick, or are some of them running to the doctor with a broken fingernail, so to speak?
Now, these would be severe illnesses.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Generally speaking, I would...
Okay. That's what I would pray. Thank you. I'm sorry that we have that problem with our clientele.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We did, since our last meeting, have one FOIA. Emily Cohen from the Chicago Tribune News, sending a FOIA regarding homeless, the number of homeless students and costs associated with our homeless students. In the board reports, we had our monthly staffing enrollment suspension and attendance reports for the boards of you. And Carol, we have a treasurer's report.
Yes, we do. Included in your board pack is the November treasurer's report. Before I start that report, I would just like to thank the Warren Township High School Federation of Teachers for giving the business office the excellence award for 2016. We do have some representatives here, and I cannot tell you how much this has been appreciated by our office, that they recognize the work that we've done. And everybody in the office was very touched by receiving this. So, thank you again, and hopefully we live on to it and keep going forward. So, just wanted to say that.
Congratulations.
It was a great recognition by the union for some very... The hard work of the staff that really tries to go out of their way to help. So, thanks again. Treasurer's report. We have gone through my staff and done a mid-year review through December. The December bank statements weren't ready for us to present December, but I just wanted to start off. We looked specifically at everybody's salary. We looked at benefits. We looked at all the major departments, O-N-M, transportation, special education, technology, so we could get an idea of where we thought the budget might end up in December. We budgeted a $2.3 million operating deficit. We don't see that we're going to do a lot better than that. I'm hopeful, but based on the review we've done for six months, we don't see really any room. The other thing I wanted to say is about good old state of Illinois. We received, I think, the last day of our December, which probably getting here, I did our January bank statements, about $800 and some thousand dollars of state payments from June of 2016. What that means to me and for, I would think, other business officials in other districts is that probably in 2017, we may be able to only record three of our state categorical aid payments. And this does not include general state aid. That is up to date. So, that's a further concern to me that we're really going to be watching. For us to record that, we have to receive the payment by August 31st. Not necessarily by June 30th, but by August 31st. But when you didn't get that payment till last day of December this year, you know, it is concerning and something we'll be watching and updating the board on. If you look at the November treasurer's report, and the first page of the detailed financial information is our dashboard that we have, and if you look at that colorful page, it has our surplus from last year at this time to our year-to-date November at this time. Last year at this time, we had a $6.2 million surplus. This year, we've got a $3.2 million surplus. So, we've lost some ground. Some of it is timing differences that we're going to hope to make up here. And... But we do have one bit of good news.
Darn.
There is some good news. If you remember back, last year, we paid off our IMRF liability. Our IMRF rate, which is our pension for our non-certified staff, declined from 12.43% to 6.91%.
That's terrific.
It is good news for us. So, I think that was a very wise move for the board to make, and we're going to see the benefits for that every year after year. So, very happy about that one.
That number was what, like $350,000?
That's correct. $350,000 savings per year. Tomorrow at 7:30, they're going to announce the Consumer Price Index for the next lobby. Based on my conversations today, we're... Hopefully, we'll see some good news there. They're thinking 1.7 to 2%. So...
Where have we been?
Cross my fingers at 7:30.
On gasoline. I'm the only guy in the country who wants $4 gasoline, so right now.
You and me for the month of December.
Right.
Then it can go down after that. So, and that's really what drives CPI, is December fuel and fuel prices, and they did go up significantly in December. So, we'll cross our fingers. We'll get that information out. I'm sure Carol will get that out in his Friday report to you.
The last CPI was .7?
.7. And .8 the year before, and 1.5 the year before that, I believe. So, that really concludes my treasurer's report, unless the board doesn't get a questions.
So, that state payment that we got on December 31st?
It probably hit the bank in January, so you'll see in January.
It's going to be for this year.
It's not revenue this year, which is the unfortunate thing, because I quoted as revenue last year.
Right. Even though it's cash on hand, but it's not going to...
It's cash. It's not revenue.
So, basically, we had less money at the end of last year than we set on paper, because we didn't get it till now.
Correct. If we would have had the fourth site, or the auditors would have had the fourth site, they would have got us delayed recording that.
And last time we talked, we were fearful that check wasn't coming.
We were. And we were right, but finally it came.
It did come, so that's the good news.
Apparently, there's all... It's not ISVE that has the sanctions. The Controller's Office has significant sanctions if they don't pay it by the end of summer.
Carol, how much was that payment?
I think it's about $831,000.
Okay.
How much was the special transportation reimbursement that we received?
Transportation reimbursement and special ad private facility and special ad extraordinary.
Okay. On we go.
Thanks, Carol. We're letting the board know, we're currently working on the Warren connection, so we'll be sending out our newsletter to the community and staff and highlighting our first semester accomplishments and news that happened in the district. So, we're currently working on that. We send that out twice a year. In terms of general information about the strategic plan, one thing that is, we're starting to do, so we hope it will be helpful in the future, is to make sure that we're tying things together at our meetings and that we keep ourselves on track to the strategic plan. We found easy ways to link the aspect or the themes within the strategic plan, actually in board docs. So, as we have presentations that are, you know, specific to a certain area in the strategic plan, we'll try to link those back. So, most of our items, as you see, should link back to a certain part within the plan. Also, we've had really good work by Rob and the other members of our website committee. They've been spending some time over the last couple of months. They had to know more about websites and vendors, and we reviewed and now, if you remember, our current platform, it does a lot more for us probably than we use it for. We don't know if it's necessarily user-friendly from just a website perspective, so we share point, there was a lot of upfront cost involved with that significant, and we still probably pay $4,000, $5,000 a year for to update that site. Nobody's really happy with it. It's just kind of there. So, we're excited about the change. We reviewed a number of other, four or five other websites that are all just kind of general websites, if you will. Most of them, or at least three of them, came in at reasonable cost. And what I mean by that is, the one that we're looking for is wires, school wires. Light board. Light board, school wires. That feature would basically cost us about $2,000 to start up and get us to the summer, and then it's only about $2,400 annual fee. The others were a little bit more, a little bit less on the startup cost and the annual fee. But the bottom line with it on our end is, you know, paying $2,000 startup and then $200 a month, you know, $2,400 a year is really much more reasonable, and obviously will help us on our end communicate better. So, they've been doing a great job. We're ready to start moving forward, and what that means is, we'll get some paperwork signed with the... Our goal is to get some paperwork signed with the vendors soon, so they can get in here and actually give us some product that we can show to a larger committee than their steering committee, or their steering committee. And then we'll eventually get some surveys out to our staff, our students, the community that wants to play a part just on particular templates. That's all very important, because our goal is to have the changeover happen by January 1st. So, our commitment to some specific templates on a specific vendor by March 1st was our goal, so we can by June 1st have time to transfer the thing over. Great work to Rob and his team in getting that moving forward. And that is the strategic plan. We also have centennial events. We have a number of things coming up that I know some of you know. On the 20th, we have our cheer competition. That's actually the North Suburban Competition. I think it's called that, Libertyville, but it's on our centennial, because we usually get good props and go up to that competition. Saturday is not a centennial event, but we do have the Northern Area Conference FBLA event at Oak Plain that we host every year. The 27th is a super show at Oak Plain. On the 28th, it's our boys and girls hockey event. And then just looking around the corner, February 2nd is our almond open house, and February 9th is our Oak Plain open house. So, those are just general announcements. Couple other things that I just wanted to tie off a little bit on. We did, I guess it was about a week or so ago, maybe two weeks now, House Bill 2912 was signed by the governor. We've been talking about that a little bit, just in terms of easing up on the licensure for all levels of education. So, everywhere from substitutes to higher-level administration, they're looking at trying to just make sure that they're not putting roadblocks in the way unnecessarily. They eased up on some of those restrictions. We think it'll help us in the long run when it does come time, they're looking for people transferring in from out of state or recruiting subs. It pretty much is just good decision on the state's part to do that. And knowing that, you know, the side argument against that is keeping a high level of rigor, but all districts can, you know, have the flexibility to hire, but still choose who they hire. So, that's some districts downstate really benefiting from that this greatly. And on the Friday, last Friday, 13th, I did meet in Buffalo Grove with a bunch of our area county superintendents and many of the local legislators about some really critical issues. Chair Jesse L. was there, and some, Melinda Bush, and someone from her office. Most people had some representation there. Just some of the things that were of discussion, there is a collection of nine bills that are out there together, right? And it's not about the evidence-based funding model, because that piece of it, there's some agreement when they start to fund schools a different way, that some agreement that they got a good model, right? So, that's kind of as a backdrop. But ahead of all that is still the battle, the tug-of-war over the budget, right? And so, the way they were explaining it to us is, especially in the Senate, they have good feeling about nine bills that are tied together, right? They're all kind of give and take. The bad thing about what Carol said earlier was, there's always a chance, they always references without being too detailed about the tax freeze for a couple of years, and there's certain things that are always hanging around. But, you know, those nine bills together, they think might be able to get some things done. No guarantees. The reason I wanted to bring it up, though, was February 1st is when the report is due to the front commission on the new funding model. The evidence-based funding model is still strong on everybody's perspective. There's some losers, but no districts were to lose money in their transition, so that's why it got a lot of support. Those two things together are still positive for the long-term funding of schools in Illinois. Doesn't help us today, but we need to do something differently altogether. And that's what I wanted to go through, just in terms of general announcements. But the last thing, we've got a number of people here today, and a lot of whom are here because we, for the last couple of months, we've been... Thanks to the leadership of William, Carol, and Cory, and our transition team, many of whom are here tonight, we promised the board in our strategic plan that we would do an overview of our transition program from top to bottom. So, they've been spending a lot of time talking to the people at transition, going out to other places, and I wanted to turn it over to William and Carol to bring us through this presentation.
All right. Thanks for having us. And as you see, we're just going to kind of go through our audit process and basically give you our strengths of the program and our recommendations for improvement for the program. And I just want to point out, we do have some transition staff here, and they really worked hard. Carol and I kind of pushed them in September and October, because we needed to have this all finished up. So, they spent a lot of hours on this, a lot of research hours, and a lot of time after school. So, I just want to commend them for their professionalism and their time for all of this.
Can you introduce them?
I most certainly can. Yes, we have Caitlin Mueller.
Hi, dear.
Alan Farley. Mary Hill. And Marilyn Hugby. I think, and then... Yeah, okay. All right. And also, if you have any questions throughout this, just stop us, and we'll be more than happy to present, or tell, or ask, or answer your questions.
So, before we get into the essentials of our actual audit process, excuse me, just wanted to walk you through a little bit of what transition services are for IDPA. So, transition services really are a coordinated set of activities that focus on the academic and functional achievement as students move from this kind of school world into the adult living world, specifically looking at post-secondary education, vocational education, employment, adult services, and [inaudible] such.
Carol, could you do some mic? Because I'm not sure that on the recording, the people could hear you. Karen, could you do some mic? Because I'm not sure that on the recording, the people could hear you.
I figured I was talking about.
No? I don't know. Yes, I want everybody to be able to hear it.
Okay. So when we start looking, I'm not... So we want to make sure that we're developing a program based on the student's individual needs, interests, and preferences. When we take a look at developing the program, we want to make sure that we're including community experiences, development of employment, and acquisition of daily living skills are the main areas of focus. So just a couple of fun facts about transition. So the age group in which we're talking about, making sure that we're all on the same page, these are the students who are typically eighteen to twenty-two. It's the students who have finished four years here, okay? We are really looking to make an eight-year commitment. If you think about the time in which they walked through our doors as freshmen to the time in which they age out, it's about eight years, okay? So we often get the question of whether or not these students earn a warrant or not, so we figured we would answer that. So yes, they do receive a warrant diploma. However, after four years, they receive what we call certificate of completion. The reason why we do that is when we want them to participate in graduation with all of their same-age peers. But we hold the diploma because IDEA services, so essentially special education services, cease once you receive your diploma. And through the IEP process, we want to make, we've already recommended and determined that these students require or benefit from these additional services, so we hold them. And then as soon as they age out, or once the student or their family decides that they're no longer interested in the program, we hand them their diploma and say congratulations, okay? So how do we determine how many teachers we need? We follow the same ISVE ratios that we do for any of our other programs. And then how do we identify these students? It's all through the IEP team. It's all IEP team-based decisions. It's really taking a look at their current levels of functioning as well as what their long-term goals are.
The strategic plan process in 1516, if you remember, there was a goal to the entire special education department. And so what we did last year was we made some changes to our work-based learning transition specialist position and also the vocational support position. So very little change last year because we knew we were going to do this audit process. Also, last spring, Dr. Olgram met with the transition staff and basically established a timeline and told them about this audit process. In 2016, 2017, we had a very specific goal for just the transition program. And there it is. And basically, we wanted to make sure that we had the community access, that we have the pre-vocational training, and then rec and leisure opportunities. And then each year, we would evaluate the effectiveness of that. So Kara and I got together this summer, and basically, we developed the process for this audit. And then we also reviewed research-based practices for the transition programming. And then we developed this rigorous timeline to get this done, basically by the end of October. So we were meeting sometimes three times a week in September and October in order to get this finished. Everything we talked about was based on these five essential components. We had developed a survey. When we went to other places for a site visit, we used these five essential components to evaluate everything. So it was the student-focused planning, family engagement, program structures, inter-agency collaboration, and student development. So it's all based on research, and this is, you know, the top five things in every transition program. Our audit process, basically, the very first thing we did was we surveyed the transition staff just to see what they thought the strengths and areas of improvement were, okay? So once we were doing all of that, Kara had organized four site visits for our staff. And what it was is it was a rotation. The same group of five people did not go to every site, so we kind of rotated through so everybody could see them. The four sites we visited were Zion Benton, Stevenson, District 211, and Kirk. And basically Kirk is Seidel's version of Laramont.
An SSEO's.
Yeah.
And it's an An SSEO's version of Laramont. So another special.
All these little acronyms I can't get straight out of.
Forty-five, I'm around that way.
All right. So we had a team of five. It was a teacher, a paraprofessional, a job coach, a related service person, then we had an administrator go. After each site visit, we used the PLT time that following Monday, and we kind of discussed the potential inclusion. Like what did we want to include in our program from what they just saw? And keep in mind, everything was aligned with those five essential components. And we also addressed, okay, we want to include that, but there's kind of a barrier. Like, you know, we identified barriers along the process. A focus group was also established, and they had the task of going through all of the research and all of the surveys. And basically, we came up with, they reviewed those surveys, we did the projected enrollment analysis, and then we also made the final recommendations, whether it was with the schedule, the instructional method, staffing, and facilities. And just so you know, the members of the focus group were Caitlin, Beth O'Line, Yvonne Eel, Marilyn Huckabee, Kara, Cory, and myself.
So as we concluded our audit process, we came across a couple of important findings. One thing is that for the past couple of years, we have really worked to expand our community partnerships and to make sure that our families are involved in that process. When we compared how we were doing in those areas with the other sites that we went to see, we felt that we really excelled in those areas. So we were very proud of that. Main area of improvement that we had found was really to expand our vocational curriculum and our experiences. We'd really like to make sure that we are also increasing, or enhancing, I guess is a better way to describe it, our independent living curriculum, specifically in the area of meal preparation. We're a little bit hindered in that area with not having a full kitchen, so we would like to find a way to really kind of enhance that. But our main goal moving forward, and you'll see on the upcoming slides, is really developing and enhancing our pre-vocational program. Okay, so here you will have a slide in terms of our transition enrollment analysis. We do have data that stems from years prior to this, but we figured we would start here. Because in 2014, 2015, the transition program moved from Seidel, the Laramont location, over to Freddie Mills in January 2015. So you will see that we started there with twenty-five students. In the yellow is where our current enrollment is, and then we have projected four years out. So before we move on to the next slide, you'll notice here that there are asterisks, okay? We currently, right now, have our program split into, our students split into two different programs. We have a Group One and a Group Two, which we'll explain further in the next couple of slides. But right now, we currently have one teacher for this group and two teachers for this group. Because our enrollment is increasing here, and we need to adhere to the ISVE guidelines, we are requesting an additional teacher to help to support these students, okay? So when we're starting to take a look at why is our enrollment increasing? And we get the question a lot, and we have really kind of sat down and tried to rack our brains as to why is it increasing? So a couple of different potential factors that we feel are impacting this. One, our total number of students in special education continue to remain pretty steady despite the decline in overall district enrollment. And our enrollment currently at transition is representative of our students who, four years ago, started as freshmen. Keep in mind, all of our students who started to transition this year, all of their general education counterparts have moved on. They're so with us. We have had consistent enrollment into our ELS and our functional program over the past four years. It's gone about fourteen students, fourteen, fifteen students. Next year, we're actually projected to be at nineteen between incoming ELS, Karen Almond, and then the functional program over at Oak Plain. Big thing here that I think is really impacting our enrollment is that we are making recommendations from other programs as well. In the past, we have, most of our students have participated in either our functional or ELS programs. But we are having an increase of students who are participating in transition, who have been supported through a variety of other models, you know, like our cross-cat. We have, I think, this upcoming year, about five or six students that are part of our cross-cat program. So we're really kind of expanding our community demographics within that. And again, making sure that we are doing that eight-year commitment.
The program structure, basically what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through what we have for current programming, and then Kara will talk about the recommended programming. Okay, so for our current programming, basically, they're going off the Almond schedule, okay? So, and the reason being, I think they started at Almond, we started this whole program, so obviously they go off the Almond schedule. So basically, they had community instruction, mobility trips were in there, classroom instruction, vocational training, rec and leisure, and then the lunch. And so, as Kara had mentioned, we want to increase that vocational, because that's where we felt our area of improvement was. So we want to increase the vocational training, still keeping everything kind of the same, but making a bigger focus on that vocational training.
So what we are proposing next year is, as you can see from our current programming, things are kind of split into thirds, okay, roughly. What we are looking at for next year is having our students all start at the same time and at the same time, but really having an AM/PAM schedule. So students are there for the full day, but one half of their day will be focused on independent living, and the second half of their day will be focused on vocational. Now, whether or not you do that first or second, you know, it remains to be, you know, same based on your schedule, but every student will receive the same amount of time, okay? And then, sorry, we'll still eat that, we'll stuff up lunch. We'll still make sure of the packed lunch and then the recreation, at least your time as well.
And this is, and I'm just going to put them all up here. Just so, we have a Group One and a Group Two, if you noticed that on, Group One is the one that's increasing. Basically, from my knowledge, Group One was called the experiential group. So then Group Two, they just kind of called non-experiential. Not that they didn't have experiences, but it was just not the experiential group, okay? So the experiential group, their day started at eight fifteen. Remember, those are our highest-need kids. They have, you know, medical needs and stuff, so it's easier to start at eight fifteen. The non-experiential group actually started their day with the kids at seven fifteen. So what we're recommending is, one, we're recommending some name changes.
So Group One, we would like to start to refer to them as participating in our supported adult living skills, so our sales program. This is because the students that will be participating in this program will really need support for really the, you know, for the rest of their lives, whether or not it's through their family, caretakers, or residential services, that really will be a much more of a supported focus. And then our second group, which we called non-experiential in the past, we would like to start referring to them as our CALs, which is our career and adult living skills. These students, everybody will still focus on the independent living as well as the vocational skill sets. However, this will have a much larger independent focus. If you will notice too, we are recommending some time changes, so having all of our students start at eight fifteen. All of our staff would start at seven fifteen. This would allow for prep time, collaboration, contractual plan time, things along those lines. But having all of us start at eight fifteen.
So our current staffing is for the thirty-two students that we have out there currently. With our current staffing, the maximum we could have is student and students. Once we go over the thirty-nine mark, now we need to have an additional staff. So our current staffing, basically, we have three certified teachers that each get a lead teacher stipend. I'm not going to go through all of it, you can kind of read that, work-based learning, okay? We have the job coaches, the program professionals, blah, 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 okay? And our recommendation, you'll notice a couple of main differences here.
Our recommended staffing will allow us to not only support the forty-four students, but will also allow us to increase up to fifty-two without having to add any additional staff per current ISVE guidelines. As I mentioned earlier, we are looking to recommend a fourth certified teacher to help to support the sales group, just based on our increased numbers. But we are looking also to kind of restructure our vocational lead teacher position.
And we will always, you know, right now, look at efficiencies that we can build in with other people that are there just to make sure that we're doing exactly and we don't have too many staff changes.
Question?
Yes.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the net, there's not, are you saying there's not a net change in number of staff members between current and proposed?
No, we've got our recommended.
Okay.
We want teachers.
Just one teacher. Gotcha.
One teacher.
I was just looking at the max.
Well, it's this program, there's going to be, I'll do a little caption, like what we have to do at the Almond campus, so there's going to be some impact over there, okay? If you noticed, we did have the vocational lead teacher and the work-based learning teacher. And with our lead teachers, we did give them specific responsibilities. So we wanted to make sure, we outlined exactly what we wanted this vocational lead teacher to do. And if you remember, we wanted to increase our vocational opportunities. So this lead teacher would be responsible for getting increased vocational opportunities based on student interest. They would also be doing a pre-vocational curriculum, oversee the job coach support, create a tiered system for vocational support, meaning what's the entry-level position at TJ Maxx, what's an intermediate, and what's one that they can do on their own. So we want to build these kids so that they are learning as they go and become more independent. Increase the vocational sites, collaborate with the transition staff, and basically expand also the volunteering options for our students with the sales program. Okay, those, remember, those are, that's Group One, the most needed, and basically, we'd like them to do more volunteer opportunities. So our current facilities, we're at Freddie Mills, the square footage is about six thousand. The rental cost, I believe we paid that per month, and just, you know, the lease expires August of 2017. So that's kind of why we were in this, you know, not rush, but we had to say something, do something.
Yes. So moving forward, we would like to remain at Freddie Mills. We've talked with the staff extensively about this. We really do feel that it is a benefit to the program. It allows for public access. It allows for a lot of impromptu adult living skills instruction without having to do the additional coordination of transportation and things along those lines. We are very fortunate for that location and actually a little jealous from some of our counterparts for our, they were very excited. They're like, would love to learn some more about that. Currently, as Willie said, we have our square footage based on the student increase we are looking to increase. We have found a location that is in close proximity. We've been working with Carol as well as the Sunning Corporation, and we're looking for approximately a thousand more square feet. This thousand more square feet will allow us to not only just have some room to maneuver with the additional students, but it will also allow us to create some onsite job training opportunities, which we currently, is an area of growth for us. We do have some, but we would really like to do some onsite training before students go out to our job site. So that's really what we're hoping that we use this additional space for. And in addition to this additional space, we are looking to do some renovations to the existing location, just to, again, I'm not...
Okay, so the resources needed to like sum this up. So from our current staffing plan, what we're looking at is to add the one certified teacher at Almond. And you're going to say, where did that come from? We had a work-based learning teacher at Almond, and basically what happened is they were teaching four out of their five classes. So they were actually teaching in the Almond Special Ed Department and not really doing much with our work-based learning program. So we want to add that person at Almond and then that work-based learning teacher with the adult access. Add the one certified teacher at transition due to that growth in that Group One, our sales program. Increase our square footage at Freddie Mills. And have a lease extension for three years, which includes that additional space, so that's kind of what we're asking. Keep in mind, there's reimbursements that go with this. Because the transition program is in our ALLOC, we would get full funding for those extra twelve kids. It's about six thousand dollars per student, so that would give us about seventy-two thousand. There is teacher reimbursement for those teachers that we would need, so that's your eighteen thousand. We would have one lead teacher position at transition instead of the three, so that would be a savings of ten thousand. And then there's a possible reduction, nothing said in stone, but we're looking at, we have a registered nurse out there, and we want, we're looking into to see if we can have a CNA do that job instead of the registered nurse. So we're, you know, there could be a possible reduction.
We're not required to have a registered nurse with the special needs students that are there?
I don't, I don't think there's a requirement, but...
It's basically nursing needs, so we're doing a class for that area.
So it depends on, you know, what are the... Yeah. So, we're looking into it, so.
I know, I understand. I'm not too concerned yet.
I'm not concerned yet.
I'm just asking.
I have a question. Okay. And again, you know, we're trying to build efficiencies wherever we can.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
So some final thoughts. Our Freddie Mills location really has a benefit and a unique opportunity. We are very thankful for it. As you might recall, our transition program is listed as an exemplar program. Within our strategic plan, we are very proud of it. We want to continue to expand it. When we start to take a look at, number one priority is vocational programming and experiences, top priority. We understand that there has been a lot of financial resources that have been dedicated already to this program. We understand that we are asking for more, but it really is something that we are very proud of, that as a Warren community, we have very good relationships. that as a more community, we have very good relationships in the community. And before we kind of conclude everything with any additional questions, I know that Willie thanked the transition staff, but I would just also like to share my thankfulness to you guys for your open mind to this, your dedication and lots of hours that you guys have put in for this, so I appreciate it.
Could we go back?
Sure.
Three slides, I think it is, the one about the money.
Two.
Okay, where we're going?
One more, third is better.
There you go, okay.
Okay, now we're gonna, no, I'm talking about the one where we add a thousand square feet. Can you get to that one?
There you go.
Okay. And we are currently paying thirty-seven, okay, so we would be paying fifty-two, fifty-nine for fifty-nine, sixty-nine.
Have you bottom lined all of the puts and takes of this slide and the next slide? Net impact and cost? There's a lot of...
Yes.
There's, there's, yeah, that's what I would do to understand.
Right.
I think that's, she's kind of calculating.
Yeah, I was working on that. Got it.
Isn't it cost neutral? I don't think...
No, it isn't, because you go up a little bit in cost, but it's not, it's not, it's not a lot, is what I'm trying to say.
What two teachers is, what is he putting here, fifty, sixty, one twenty? One twenty? So if you had a hundred and twenty for those teachers, can I just...
What's your...
Maybe that could be a follow-up.
That's eighteen thousand, but you know...
Oh yeah, absolutely.
No, we don't need to know right now.
No, I was just trying to get your this out.
Trying to be impressive with my math skills.
It'll be both.
I didn't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. And, and I really am grateful for this program. I think that it offers students a possibility for future employment, which is what we would like to see all of our students be able to do, is to be employed and functional in life. And I really think this is a great program, so I would like to see it continue and expand.
Are there opportunities down the road to, for students in other districts to take advantage of this program?
I know there's something I consider.
A lot of money.
Because it is.
It is.
If we can increase those vocational opportunities, there's nothing like that, like at Gurnee Mills and other students in other districts.
If we don't have fifty-two, then we can get fifty-one.
So I sound like I consider absolutely.
Yeah, I think we should.
We've got a tremendous program, extremely talented staff.
My excellent staff, but great resources.
I agree, that's a wonderful program, and I, I'd like to...
I didn't get there last year, I'd like to come.
As I was saying, yeah.
Part of the, part of the... Tried to organize with Cory a couple of weeks, and get there, so I'd love to go.
Right now, one, two of the things that are kind of with our staffing out there that goes along with expansion, thinking outside the box, or where do we go with this? You know, we haven't had the luxury, because everybody's working so hard right out there right now, we haven't had that, we really haven't had that vocational person in place out there, right? So it's kind of got swallowed up by our staffing plan. So to a degree, what will make the program take steps forward, if they have somebody with the flexibility to be thinking about things like replacements for our kids who are out there, are there other kids that can come in from other, other schools? So I do think it'll help immensely, just have that structure where there's somebody with some flexibility to really help the program move forward, so. By the way, from the board's perspective, there's two pieces that you would see the changes in the practical piece. One would be in March, when we bring out the FY eighteen staffing plan. So you'd see some of these revisions in the FY eighteen staffing plan that you would tentatively approve. And then obviously, if there's another agreement from the Simon Group, you know, either taking over. After this one ceases or before that, the Carol's working hard on. So those are probably the two, two practical places that we're...
Kara, what was your guys' comment on the cost, the staffing cost? Because the reimbursement of eighteen thousand is gonna wash out the rental increase, so that's...
We get a couple different sources of funding, one, one of which wasn't not mentioned. We'll get nine thousand dollars per staff member. So I'm gonna talk about the lease and the staffing first. So a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the two staff plus eighteen thousand, so you're talking about a hundred and two thousand. The lease cost, I just got an email from the Simon Group today because I really asked them to give us free rent. And, yes, I did. Good girl. Their response was that they would keep the rent the same on the existing space. And instead of fifteen hundred dollars, they would go down to twelve hundred dollars on the new space, but we would be responsible for improvements. And one of the pieces that we sought to look at is to get the fire marshal in there and look at the cost of putting the stove in there and ventilation and things. So that's the piece that has not been done yet.
We originally talked internally about whether three years was the right amount of time, because we're gonna run improvements, and it's open time, you know, how much do you improve internally? If you're not, sure you're gonna be there forever. But we also, on our end and on their end probably, going any further than three years might not be a good idea either, because things change and things happen flow. So at the end of the day, was, they thought three years too, and we probably thought so as well.
They thought if we want, if we talked about five years, that the rent would go up substantially because of walls into a large, long-term lease, lease, yes.
If the rent is gonna, if the rent is gonna stay fixed for how long?
Three years. Ah, she, you know what, she didn't exactly state that.
They owe each year, it goes a hundred and fifty dollars, it's about a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, I'll have to look at my email, because she didn't guarantee that it would stay the same for three years, but she did say...
You know, I think that, you know, we can see that this is gonna be necessary, so this, I think what we need to do is see what the, the bottom line is, we just make it work. I mean, you have to, if something else has to go, something else has to go. You just have to, you just have to work it out. You're gonna add the teacher anyway if the, if the students go up.
Right.
That's not even an option, so hopefully that it's gonna happen anyway, so let's just do it right and, and move on, you know? Just let us know what the total cost is and we'll take it out of the board's salary.
Give me that mine too.
You, you can also have my pension benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice work.
Thanks, Willie.
Yeah, it was great. Thank, thanks everyone, the transition staff and Willie and Kara.
Your problem, thank you.
Okay.
And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
All righty, we'll move into new business. First item is the approval to begin the budget process for the seventeen-eighteen school year.
So this is an annual event every January. We ask you to authorize the superintendent and myself to officially begin the budget process for fiscal year eighteen. There's a resolution that would need to be approved to start that process, and it's about three sentences long, so very short resolution, but we have asked the board to adopt that resolution.
Be it resolved by the school board of school district number one-twenty-one in the county of Lake and the state of Illinois, that the superintendent and the chief school business official are hereby appointed to prepare a tentative budget for said school district for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. Which tentative budget shall be filed with the secretary of this board?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Gianni, second by Munda. Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs., Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Gianni?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the authorization to close inactive student activity accounts.
We've identified accounts that are in your memo that have been inactive for well over one year. And those would be the provisions of the school code allowing you to dispose of them in one of several different passions. And in the past, we've used that money for Board of Education scholarships.
Would the guidance department handle that?
Yes.
Sounds good. I'll move to approve the closing inactive student activity counts as presented.
Second. Mr. Walls.
Motion by Munda, second by Walls. Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Gianni?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
The next action item is to designate a dollar value of the, I would look at the total dollar value of the scholarships, if that makes your wishes and what the guidance counselors distribute that. We've got a little over forty-one hundred, so if you rounded that to say four thousand dollars would be a nice round scholarship number.
What did we do last year, do you remember that?
Uh, it was less than this.
Yeah, it was less.
We got four thousand dollars, and we need to know how to break it up?
You don't need to know how to break it up, you don't have guidance counselors to say that. But you just have to designate, say, four thousand dollars.
I move to approve that the board distribute four thousand dollars in Board of Education scholarships as presented.
Second.
Mr. Drake.
Okay. Motion by Gianni, second by Drake. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Gianni?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the five-year financial presentation. She's got the tool.
He's really gonna do it?
Oh no.
Will we struggle with the math attendance? Flyer projection. I was...
Okay. Uh, this got a little bit of historical data and a prior projection. Uh, this, I use a, a PMA model. In the past, we've actually had PMA presenters come in and present the forecast. Right now, they've moved away from that, and I've worked with representatives to put the modeling together to develop the assumptions and, so this model is something that is very interchangeable if the board wants different, uh, different assumptions and different parameters. First slide is really enrollment projection. Does this have a laser?
Yes.
Oh, no.
In the middle, you can see it.
Okay.
There you go.
So right here is the actual enrollment, and this comes off a state reporting. So in two thousand seventeen, whatever, the state report was four thousand one hundred ninety-six students. I have used, gotten information from Woodland District fifty and fifty-six, their current enrollment forecast moving forward. From two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two, that is a loss of six hundred and seven students. Current eighth grade scheduling has nine hundred and eighty-one students, according to Chuck Mauer. That's less than a thousand, which we've traditionally been at about a thousand or more freshman students. What I wanted to point out also is, Woodland just did a five-year projection. The information is on their website. It mirrors what you're gonna see in this presentation. So it's kind of a confirmation of, you know, what, what they're seeing and what we're, we could most likely see. Live verse, this chart just shows on the bottom here the decrease in live verse in our zip code area. So I believe you all have this presentation in your board docs, you can read these numbers.
Go ahead.
But live verse is going down from two thousand seventeen, um, gosh, I can't read it yet.
We went from six hundred forty-eight to four hundred and ten, or four hundred and two.
So live verse, again, kind of validates the enrollment declines that a lot of our districts are, are seeing. So I just wanted to show a chart that really is historical diversity, because this really affects cost too. So what we're seeing in the blue, in the purple, is white students declining. And our biggest population that's increasing is Hispanic students, the rest are staying constant. So this is historical, not, not projected. Uh, low income count, we are coming down off the peak. That's very understandable to us, and probably very difficult here for our constituents and our parents. This is historical operating fund balance, and that's everything with debt service and capital projects. So we've kind of been, I'd say, fairly consistent here in the four, thirty-five percent range. Right now, we're at about a forty-three percent fund balance, operating fund balance range. So, uh, you know, good, steady consistency there. Okay, now our forecast projections. Okay, revenue assumptions. Uh, what they're telling me right now is one point seven's a pretty good conservative number, although tomorrow. It could go over two. In this forecasting model, I've got a one point seven percent CPI projection for property taxes for the seventeenth levy. What, you know what, in my...
What is that?
That's what's so funny, and one point seven thereafter, two eight, in the middle, mine has seven on my printout here, so I...
Yeah.
I have them there. So it's supposed to be thereafter, typographical error. Uh, we're, we included fee revenue declines based on the students declining. Also on property tax revenue, we assumed a, about a one, about a, I think a three percent increase in E.A.B. and ten million dollars of new construction. General state aid revenue is based on our property taxes and our student enrollment. So as property taxes increase and student enrollment decreases, general state aid decreases under the current funding formula. And you're gonna see the impact of this slide in just a little bit. Other state and federal revenue, basically flat, that is about eleven percent of our total revenue. So a one to two percent increase is not gonna be significant in this projection. So we just left it at, uh, basically flat. And like I said, it doesn't include any changes in the funding formula. And we'll go back and I'll remind you of these assumptions when we look at the charting. Forecasting assumptions for enrollment expenditures. Okay, so my numbers, like I said, are from Gurnee fifty-six, I got their current student population by grade, from Woodland in their presentation to the Board of Education in December two thousand sixteen, and eighth grade scheduling estimate provided by Chuck Mauer. Uh, our staffing plan is based on twenty-five FTE reductions at the individual salary level. And this is in Dr. Albrecht's two thousand and sixteen Enrollment and Staffing Report to the Board of Education presented September two thousand and sixteen. So what I've done is I've taken each individual contract for each person in the district and forecasted out five years. So each stipend, each coaching contract, we've got about seven hundred and seventy-five of those. And those are done according to the collective bargaining... And those are done according to the collective bargaining agreement in fiscal year eighteen. Hundred thousand dollars in lane changes per year. In fiscal year nineteen and thereafter, I included an average step cost of three point oh for teaching staff and three percent for other staff. I just don't have any other numbers because the contract has not been negotiated. Insurance expense is based on ten percent per year. We have an eight percent trending factor, which means eight percent adjusted the cost of providing health care. Ten percent in year one, based on tomorrow's insurance committee presentation, may not be enough. We'll see. It includes capital maintenance to buildings of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Other expenditures include a one percent increase, so supplies, et cetera. This is just Dr. Albrecht's staffing report. And I highlighted the comments, which the board has seen this presentation in board documents. You know, as we go forward, he also talks about potential reductions with other retirements and things like that. I'm gonna come back to this slide. And this looks like a lot of numbers. Hopefully, it looks better in your board packet. But I really want to take the time to go through this slide.
Good, because I couldn't figure this one out.
Okay. Now, this is a little more difficult and it looks really funky up here.
It is.
Okay, so we start with fiscal year twelve actual, fiscal year seventeen budget. So these are all actual numbers, budget. This is projection. And the next slide, you'll see it a lot easier. But there's a couple lines I want to point out. This blue line right here, and this did not come out as the slide.
Oh, it's a dozen R.
As it does on yours. This is a thirty-five percent projected fund balance. So the blue line up here is thirty-five percent projected fund balance, which is in the strategic plan. This red line is our ending year operating fund balance. So this is a very important line. We'll see it clearly on the other slide. This purple line is our projected low point in the year. I think you might have remembered me telling you that our second to third week of May is when we're at our lowest point for cash. Because that's, and if you look at the treasures report for, say, November, you'll see more expenditures coming out and then revenue going in. This carries on until we get property tax money up. So just let me look back. This projection is designed to show trends and potential outcomes if the trends continue. Targeted fund balance of thirty-five percent, low point, second, third week of May. Now, let's hope this slide is a lot clearer to look at. Now, this is just the projection. So if we look at this, this is your thirty-five percent of expenditures targeted fund balance. So right here in fiscal year seventeen, our targeted fund balance is just above our fund balance or just below our fund balance. So we've met the target in our budget in seventeen. So this red line here is end-of-year fund balances based on the projection. So in nineteen, we would have a fund balance theoretically of fourteen point eight million and includes working cash. In two thousand twenty-two, based on what I'm gonna show you, we would be in a negative fund balance situation. Our low point in cash in nineteen is a million five. That means we have to borrow if the projection holds true. And we would be fourteen million dollars in the hole in two thousand twenty-two if the projection holds true. Now, you've seen these projections before. What our job has always been is to change the direction of the trend. We hope we can do that in seventeen. I'm just not seeing it right now. These bars, you can just ignore. They're fund balances, they're bars by fund balance. I really want you just to ignore those. They're just added information. So here's really kind of the summary of the whole revenue and expenditure scene. This is the budget, and you all, I think, have recognized this number, a two point three million dollar operating budget deficit. Fiscal year eighteen, property tax revenue going up about one point five percent. And that also includes, you know, the fee reductions and any other local revenue change. You'll notice a state decline of six point four three percent. That's general state aid, and I will show you how that's happening in one of the next slides. So we're getting hurt by general state aid based on increasing EAB and declining enrollment. Woodland, look at their presentation. They're showing you the same thing. And then, like I said, I basically left federal dollars flat. On the salary and benefits side, this number, again, represents a ten percent increase in healthcare, a six point nine percent cost in IMRF. It represents every person in the district where they're moving them down a step and including the base increase in eighteen. So it is specific. I moved coaches down a step. So everybody's got moved down a step. So in the book here, there's a list of every single person and where they're gonna be in five years unless they do a lane change. So that number, you know, I feel is very specific, and it's our largest number. Other is really, like I said, about a one percent increase, pardon me, in all your other costs. We pay our land. This is our land and our lease cost on our computers. So after that, what you're seeing is in eighteen, a three point three million dollar deficit, a two point nine million dollar deficit, a four million dollar deficit, four point eight million dollar deficit, six point three million dollar deficit. So obviously, it's not a trend that can continue. And decisions are gonna have to be made collectively as an organization on changing the trend. In the past, we've been able to change the trend. Right now, I think we have more of an imbalance than we've had in the past because of, you know, low revenue, point seven CPI, point eight CPI, one point five CPI. You know, staffing costs have gone up a bit higher than that. And general state aid, that's the big, the big elephant in the room right now. So let's talk about general state aid. Okay, this is our general state aid revenue from two thousand seventeen. With ALOD money in there, great number. Calculating that out, in two thousand twenty, we're at two point three million. We have lost over half of our general state aid based on the general state aid calculator provided by the state.
They obtained it?
Lower enrollment.
Lower enrollment.
Their students, they get less money.
Yes, and what they do is, the way the formula goes, the more local resources you have, which is property taxes. So our property taxes are going up as EAB is going up and CPI is going up. We have more local available resources.
So we get less.
So we get less. What we are in here is called the foundation formula. It's the most you can get. What we fall down here is in the alternative formula. The only formula that's less is the flat grant, which Lake Forest has, which is like two hundred dollar a kid or something, a student. So we're in this middle. We've been here before. For those of you who have been here, we fluctuate between alternative and foundation. And, you know, I guess the fortunate part about the bad economy is that we got more general state aid. The unfortunate part about the battery economy and the lowering enrollment is less general state aid. So that's a big hit, big hit right there. I've, so concluding, have to borrow money in two thousand nineteen to meet the low point, which would be typically tentatious, occasionally. Negative fund balance in two thousand twenty-two. Our problem here is Woodland's. Refer to their reports on their website for, you know, comparison purposes. I think it was a really good comparison, structural imbalance. Salary and benefit costs are larger than revenue increases. And when I say much larger, they're double, but it's a, you know, a one, double of a one percent is a two percent. So not anybody's, certainly not anybody's fault. It's, you know, we, we worked with the union to come up with what we thought was a good contract. So it's just now we're, I guess, kind of, you know, we're forced to look in a little different direction and make some changes. General state aid declining. The longer we take to reverse the trend, the more the trend compounds. Right now, Woodland says if they act now, they're trying to cut four million dollars out of their budget. That would require twenty-five FTEs. If they wait for two years, it goes to sixty-seven FTEs. So we're gonna have to review, bottom line, we have to review staffing. I'm sorry to say that in front of Nikki. I know that's very personal to her and to Dan and to, you know, anybody else.
It's all of us.
In here.
Yeah.
It's sensitive to all of us.
Right.
You know, particularly to the union and the board.
Thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Carol, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Because I put this forth earlier to you, I know personally, and then also for the board's public knowledge. I do think that it would be a great idea for us, probably in a few months from now through probably September or October, to, I mean, we'll have one night for strategic planning next year. But besides that, I think having three evenings of, you know, because you go through a lot of this stuff too really quick, right?
I do.
Some of it's very easy. Others of it is, would help to deconstruct it quite a bit and go back to square one, the stuff with general state aid, the stuff with the other category there. So I do think it would be great if the boards wanted to commit to that time to, you know, invite our administrative team, the union to participate with us, obviously the board, and kind of go through a deconstruction of the whole budget, you know, from square one. And so that way, if and when we do need to make cuts, we saw through the whole picture of it kind of holistically. And, you know what, that way, I think we'll all be supportive of a plan that's, you know, the best, it's for short-term and long-term projections.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, because this is very important.
Well, the other thing you gotta realize too is the number's going, continuing to go down. I mean, it was down low when we looked at doing the changes we were making in eighteen and the twenty-five FTEs and retirements and stuff we know that's already going on. There's just, if it continues to drop like that, that's another four or five hundred students, so.
Well, this has been projected for a long time. Because I remember my very first Woodland school board meeting, they were talking about these numbers way back in April of oh-nine. And that was before Gurnee turned into a senior, we're turning it into like a senior retirement community. Everything that they're developing is all.
Property taxes with no children.
That's what they're building.
That's why.
So there's no kids then that are being brought in. But this projection has been out there for eight years, and now it's accelerating, you know, with all these seniors.
Well, it's accelerating because they...
The movement coming and there's no kids that have moved in.
They quit building houses.
Pardon?
They quit building houses.
Who quit building houses?
Everybody.
Yeah. But if you look right...
Back in two thousand and nine, as a matter of fact.
Right, absolutely.
So, yeah, it's okay.
Two thousand and nine, we were talking about it, but we're currently studying for three years.
Right. We're studying until this year, really.
Right. They saw it coming.
Okay. We can take three nights and go through this in great detail.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Now, let's talk about solar energy.
Let's do that.
Let's do that. That's a better topic. Solar energy. So let's give you a status update. Talked to Hannah Moog at the Lake County, Lake County Buildings, Buildings Department. They have not presented their amendment to, for the Unified Developer Development Ordinance. It's, they're ready to go to committee with it shortly. So they go to committee with it first, take the critique from committee, and then they plan to bring it to the, you know, board, county board in April. So that's the status of that. Status of projects in Lake County and other areas. Waukegan Solar Roof Project is underway. Grace Lake High School Solar Farm, two and a half acres, underway. Lake County actually has put solar on their roofs, so that project's about complete. Lake Park High School is underway. Valley View School underway. Stevenson High School's looking at solar. Libertyville Seventy did solar a couple, two years ago.
Carol, I thought Grace Lake.
High School?
High School, put the solar panels on the high school.
They did also.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I'm surprised about the two. What is the two and a half acres?
Two and a half acres is a field, solar field. So they have it on their roofs.
Right.
And on two and a half acres is their solar farm. So they're, they're constructing on both. Okay, so Grace Lake Project, just to give you an overview. Panels on each building, north and central, generates about thirty-five percent of their energy, withstand winds up to a hundred miles an hour. And I didn't catch how many feet of snow, but a lot. Their two-point acre, two-point-five acre solar field, north campus. This is intended to sell power to the grid. It's not being used at their facilities. It's metered by ComEd, which was a difficult process for them, financing, a fifteen-year payback. And I'll talk about how this works. Sale of energy to the grid pays for the borrowing of debt certificates. So they borrow debt certificates. They're using the money they're selling from the grid to pay the debt certificates. And hundred thousand dollar surplus in plumbing per year. So a fifteen-year payback, they were gonna use a hundred thousand dollars to pay the debt certificates off early and maybe more like a ten-year payback.
So they borrowed money to put on the solar panels on the two and a half acres.
But the revenue they're generating pays the debt certificate cost.
They hope, or is it?
That's their numbers.
Right.
That's their numbers.
We don't know that yet.
Yeah, that's their numbers. Let's see what I missed on here. Yeah. They, their doctors, I was telling you, they have a hundred thousand dollar positive cash flow after paying the debt certificates.
Doesn't, didn't Libertyville, I think, elementary school do something too?
They did their roofs also.
And they thought it was gonna take a lot longer for them?
They did.
And is it taking a lot longer? They've been doing it for like a year or two now.
Right, we don't have the data on that. I don't think they've got the data on it yet. But I can check. I can certainly check.
Yeah. Because I, as I remember, they were expecting it to be a long time before they...
Right, right.
That's why I wanted to know what's...
Their project was more done from an educational standpoint?
What do you mean, from an educational standpoint? I'm sorry.
For their students to learn alternative energy sources.
Oh, okay, okay.
Positive cash flow was not the primary motivator for them.
Okay.
It was more student learning and energy cost reduction. Or you don't, being more environmentally friendly. They use, Grace Lake used Performance Services as a contractor. I'm meeting with them on Thursday at one-thirty. This contractor's done many school projects, so I'm not meeting in the next couple of weeks. It's the next couple of days. This just looks like what, you know, smoke, solar installation. This is at, I don't know what school this is, probably Libertyville Seventy.
The elementary?
Yes. So Performance Services is a company I would talk to first because I know, and I've also got phone calls into some other contractors. And this just gives you a little bit of information about, you know, them as a... about, you know, them as a company. They've done a lot of schools. They're telling me the incentives are, there'll be a bidding process back in this coming year. We, we were in a bidding process three times last year and didn't get anything done. So those incentives help drive down the cost. And so I think that, you know, getting close to the county approving it, we certainly would like to know the board's primary emphasis on this. So we give the, the contractors really what you're looking for, whether it's reducing energy costs, positive cash flow, educational opportunities for students, being environmentally friendly.
Yes, 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 yes.
All, all the above.
Right.
All the above, okay? I'll let them know that.
It is important, I think, from the board's perspective, like at some point in time, not necessarily at some point in time, but to prioritize those items is important in case you don't do it in all of them.
Well, I'm listening after this hearing, Carol's prior presentation, I would think that number one should be a priority.
Positive cash flow, yeah.
And reduce the cost.
Yeah, and they, you know, that eventually generates positive cash flow if you, if you form the.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're welcome.
No, you did great job.
Thank you.
We'll also bring this back, thanks to the board members that reached out to us in regards to bringing this back on our radar. It's about a year, but I think that we actually talked about it. And we'll make sure it's on this year's addendum on the sixteenth strategic plan about reviewing this present page also.
Okay, then we'll move on to property. CEDOL wants to know about property.
I have a meeting coming up with Dr. Moline from CEDOL, very preliminary meeting, but I wanted to get the board's feelings really on whether I even have permission to go talk to them in regards to their long range planning. Very, he's just trying to be very early on here. They're going to start some strategic planning. They're thinking, what happens if we talk about expansion at Laramie because they've had some issues with just the size of that building and the number of students they're servicing now and the facility needs. So there's a potential that they might want to talk about expansion at Laramie. If that comes up, the only place, only way they can expand at Laramie is south, south towards Gatesley Grove, which is the land that, there's some acreage, a handful of acres there that's in between the six acres that were sold to Laramie or to CEDOL back in 2009 maybe. And so they, what he was wondering is, is there any possibility, if the discussion starts to go that way, that the district would be willing to part with those acres? Not, not talking about price or anything like that at this point in time, just talking about, does the, you know, do we know that it's an absolute no? Because then obviously he'd be able to put a halt to any conversations about that's not feasible. Otherwise, I can continue, you know, if it's, well, maybe, and I can meet with him and see where it goes. I talked to our administrative team about it, just, you know, one of our cabinet meetings, just to get their feelings. And obviously, from a school's perspective always, right, and you guys know this too, like, you never want to give up green space, but we don't have any immediate plans for that land right now either, so.
It's on the west side of the road, that entrance road.
It's on the west, it's on the west side of the entrance road.
Across from the baseball field.
Right. So between Laramie and, we'd have to cross the road to use it. After we can't cross the road.
With a garden base?
No.
No.
The other side. The other side of our entrance road.
You come off, you come off of Gauges, and you turn on the Moore Township Road. Baseball field's on your right. This property's on your left, just before you get to Laramie.
It's just, it's kind of dense space. Is it big enough to use it for instance? Could there be a baseball field or soccer field?
Yeah, we talked about potentially being.
We, you know, quite that's.
I think with our financial, projected financial problems, it would be a fee, a feasible suggestion to.
I think a million dollars an acre could get them just by whatever.
At least I'm hearing that there was no immediate reservations about the.
It's not no, it's just not. Bring your checkbook. That's where it is. We're nearly, fairly, if we were on the last one.
And he wanted to make sure too that, what you, obviously, he's just trying to be smart and make sure that you follow all the right steps. Thank you.
I'd also like to bring back in the future a discussion about selling that 100 acres of vacant land on Stern School Road, but for no educational purpose. So we don't need it with enrollment to find you.
Right on. Anything else on that?
No, thank you.
We're moving on to the approval of the 2017-18 public school calendar.
The 2017-2018 public school calendar as presented. Second.
I would just like to make a comment. I was approached by quite a few students about having to go to school on the 22nd for half a day before Thanksgiving. Well, this year was whatever the date was. And they were upset because they had to go to school half a day and all the other schools around didn't have school. And so I, I'm glad to see that you took that into consideration in the November calendar, part of the calendars.
Well, about 30% of our kids didn't go.
Well, yeah, well, some of the families left because they had planned to leave. John, in November, you, you, the kids are no longer, wait.
We still.
They are going on the 22nd?
Yeah, we always, we talked, we did talk about this. I can tell you this, on our end, we did administratively talk about it, right? The, we, we look at our days that are, you know, lower than usual attendance days. That is one, right? And so that's a battle we fight. The thing with the elementary districts, and keep in mind that we know this is true, is some, not necessarily all of ours, or probably every year to year, some have taken that whole week off over.
Not our favorite schools.
I know, but traditionally, like, the center schools have started, in all, many districts have started doing different things with that. We, on our end, we were afraid, well, if we keep carving it off, at some point in time, when's the Tuesday become the Wednesday? And at least for right now, we also have to, that's another day we have to add in. So, because we did talk about it, it's not, we do know our attendance that day and a few other days of the year aren't as stellar as we would like. By some point in time, you know, we have a hard time getting rid of that day.
Add another day somewhere.
But we have to add another day.
Well, I'm just bringing it to the board's attention that quite a few students would appreciate having that half day off. I'm sorry, I misread the calendar.
I'm sure they would, Liz.
Yes, they would, they would. They really would. And part of it has to do with families leaving on the 22nd and.
They're going to leave anyway, so.
Well, some of them are, but some of them had to rearrange their schedules. I mean, they were kind enough to do that, let's put it that way.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and we have a second?
We do.
Motion by Drake, second by Mundah.
Roll call.
Mr. Walls.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi?
It kills me to do this, but yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
There are seven yes, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is approval of 2017-18's school board meeting schedule.
Was that, I never saw the new schedule, so I don't understand.
It's in your board dog, right below the motion.
I can't.
Did you go lower?
Oh, maybe that's.
Oh.
Oh, okay, I, I, I see where it is.
Okay, cool.
My, oh, well, we haven't made the motion yet.
I will move to approve the proposed 2017-2018 school board meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
My only concern is if we get new members of the board, they may not be able to make those dates, that's all. I'm expressing a concern or a impossibility.
Okay.
I would also like to say that I think we need to have two meetings in January. I, I, I know you all, many of the board members don't feel it's necessary, but I think there are some things that we need to discuss publicly that generally are not discussed. So I would like to see a second board meeting in January. And in April, I don't see any board meetings scheduled. Oh, I'm looking in the calendar again. I'm so sorry. Thank you for being patient and understanding with me. Oh, they're not in there. March, but no April. Am I right?
The 2017-18 Board of Education meeting schedule?
Yeah, there's a March 22nd and then the spring break, but there's nothing in April.
March 20th.
April, April.
April 10th and April 24th.
Green squares.
I don't have it, honestly.
Okay, well, they're in, trust us.
You're on a long schedule.
No.
No, I'm not.
Why is where's red?
Public school calendar.
Oh, there it is.
It went, okay, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
None.
Roll call.
Motion by Conway, second by Mundah. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi?
Yes.
Mr. Walls? Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the first reading of the district board policies, which we went through during the committee report. Next item is the approval of the payment of the bills. I move.
I move to approve the payment of the bills for January 17th, 2017 in the amount of
Good question.
Second.
Sorry.
May I get a question?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Were you in the paint for that water main? Was that brake on the wrong side of the valve or something?
No.
There was a $16,000.
That was plumbing in the lock.
Different plug. Okay, good.
It was plumbing what?
In the lock.
Got it.
Oh, okay. I, I have another question on the bills. I don't understand why this check number 332532 was paid on 12/12. And again, okay, that's avoided one. Let's see. Oh, okay, maybe I'm looking at this wrong. Okay, never mind.
Okay.
But I do have questions about, are we withholding tax on legal settlements, Carol? We are not withholding any kind of tax on legal settlements.
No.
Okay.
I'm on advice of our attorneys.
Okay. I, I, there, there's some other questions, but I'll, I'll ask, I'll reserve those for another time.
You made the motion.
I know, but I feel that I have the right to question.
Absolutely. So if you send those questions all, then we can all get the answers at the same time. That'd be great, Liz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
I would just like to make a statement for the public. There were 87 pages in the payables and the first 30 in vouch checks that were already paid before tonight. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, we're, we're basically approving payments that have already been made.
Well, go ahead and make a list again of why.
I know, I, I understand, but some of them.
We were a little behind on getting the bills ready because of some illnesses in the department, so we'll go ahead and get that ready for you.
Yeah, because I, I really feel like it's, we should be able to have those at a current board meeting, if at all possible.
I totally agree, and like I said, we've had so many people out sick that it just, we were scrambling at the last minute just to get all the bills ready for the board meeting, so.
Well, like the December 29th bills, some of those looked like they could have been made at the December meeting.
Well, I'll, I'll have a, okay, explanation for you for the next board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
So I have a motion by Biondi and a second by Anderson. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the hiring recommendations. So I move to approve Exhibit A Hiring Recommendations, numbers 128 through 143 as posted.
138, you said?
138 through 143 as posted. And 144 Rena Sadkowitz, leave of absence. 145 Julie Unger, leave of absence. 146 Dave Mohab, new hire. 147 Sue Walker, new hire.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Walls. Mr. Mundah?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Shut my board dogs down by accident, so that worked out well. I got it, it's back. I'm back. And the last is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of December 13th, 2016.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of December 13th, 2016.
Roll call when you're ready.
Motion by Conway, second by Mundah. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.